Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of East Providence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 16th. May we all raise our eyes for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Approval of the consent calendar for vote. There's nothing on the consent calendar.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is licenses not requiring public hearing for vote. Application for holiday sales license, Edward Timas, doing businesses as work and sandwich, 1055 South Broadway, 02914. This also is in conjunction with Item 7, licenses requiring public hearing. Application for vitulating license as well.
Okay, is the applicant here? Please step up to the podium. Thank you, sir. Is all his, all the information, the racket's up to date?
Yes, everything is.
And at the pleasure of the council, does anyone have any questions or concerns that they would like to address at this time? Well, someone like to make a motion, then?
Mr. President, move approval.
Okay, we have approval. Does that, would anyone like to second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you, sir.
All right, I look forward to serving you guys. Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is Van Lee, doing businesses grab and go, 350 North Broadway, 02916.
The applicant here? Please step to the, step up to the podium.
In conjunction to that, there is an, there is the licenses requiring public hearing for Van Lee as well. Application for vitulating license.
So this is a public hearing?
Yes.
We're doing holiday sales first, right?
Holiday sales is first and then vitulating, yes.
No public hearing in holiday sales.
Okay.
Mr. President, move to approve under holiday, under holiday sales.
Okay, okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Mr. President, second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote on this?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Deborah Kennedy, doing businesses Archie's, 292 Bullock's Point Avenue, 02914.
Is the applicant here? No one here for Archie's or representative? All their paperwork in place?
All their paperwork is in place, yes.
Everything's all paid up to date?
Yes, and we haven't received anything back regarding creditors or anything, so clear.
Well, good.
Yes.
Took a leap of faith, move to approve, sure.
Okay, we have a vote, a vote for approval. Anyone like to second that? Second. Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Tony Amaral, Holy Ghost Feast, the date's July 26th to the 28th, 2019, at 8:46 Broadway.
Okay, is the applicant here? Mr. Amaral, you want to step up or would you prefer not to? Okay. Oh, okay. Everything all set?
Everything is all set. Everything, all paperwork's been turned in, thank you very much.
Okay, so at the pleasure of the council, anyone have any questions or concern at this time?
Once again, Mr. President, these seem to me traditionally approved every year. They're temporary for a specific window of time. Clerk's office has vetted the process, so I also would move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is application for one day entertaining license for vote, John Perry, Tiofilo Braga Club Feast of the Holy Ghost. The date is July 12th to the 14th. This had already occurred and it did get approved by the clerk's office since they were within.
Okay.
They're within, so we can, yep, we can go ahead and pass over that.
Okay. Anyone here from the Braga Club? No?
Mr. President, Madam Clerk, does this require police chief approval or review, please, to take care of?
They, um...
It's a temporary?
Yes, it's just a, it's just a one, one-time special event for the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th.
No parking restrictions or issues that we...
Right, our licensing clerk will go ahead and vet it out with the police, with the police, and there wasn't anything, any feedback or anything. Yeah.
I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Tony Amaral, Holy Ghost Feast, the date's July 26th to the 28th, 2019, at 8:46 Broadway.
Okay, is the applicant here? Mr. Amaral, you want to step up or would you prefer not to? Okay. Oh, okay. Everything all set?
Everything is all set. Everything, all paperwork's been turned in, thank you very much.
Okay, so at the pleasure of the council, anyone have any questions or concern at this time?
Once again, Mr. President, these seem to me traditionally approved every year. They're temporary for a specific window of time. Clerk's office has vetted the process, so I also would move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. That concludes Class F applications. Next one, next item, please.
Next item is application for one day entertaining license for vote, John Perry, Tiofilo Braga Club Feast for the Holy Ghost. Location 26 Tiofilo Braga Way.
Can we, let me just take a look at this. Is there any two here that we could combine?
Actually, you can do 1, 2, 3 all at the same time. The John Perry, Tony, and Lydia are all in conjunction.
Does any council person have any objections to that?
None.
Okay. All the licenses, and this is a, is this a public hearing or?
No, just a...
No? Okay. Anyone like to follow up a motion? So we have a motion on the floor for approval. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second that.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote, please, and this is for all three, for the Holy Ghost Feast.
That's right, for 1, 2, and 3.
Yes.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. So that concludes, or excuse me, now take care of 1, 2, and 3, and we're on the fourth one.
Yes.
This was, oh, go ahead, you want to read it off?
Oh, sure, Gregory S. Dias Esquire, 19th Annual Block Party. Date, July 20th, 2019. The location is Tryon Avenue, Gibb, and Estelle Street.
From what I understand, it shouldn't have gone under Mr. Dias's name. However, I'm familiar with this block party. They close down the street. They've had it for a number of years. I myself attend to it. Neighbors come out, they sit around, they have music, the kids, they have games for the kids. So I don't see, and they've never had an issue, concern, or problem in the past. It's just a great community event that they have for neighbors just getting together and just sitting around talking, and the kids just playing and entertaining for, entertainment for the kids as well.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Okay.
Mr. President, the Britto family's invited to this event. Must be a good one. I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, I recommend more of these around the city, to be quite honest with you. You get to know your neighbors better.
That's true.
Next item, please.
Next item is Tara Machado. Live band, the date of event is September 1st, 2019. The location is 79 Aragonston Avenue.
Is Ms. Machado here? Would you like to step up to the podium, please? Okay, so what is it exactly that they're looking for within a live band? Is this a, is this, would you describe what you're looking to accomplish here?
It is a, just a band for the day. We're going to have family, friends, neighborhood.
Like a cookout in your backyard?
Yeah.
Oh, right in your backyard. You're not, you're not requesting a block off street or anything.
No, not blocking the road, just right in the yard.
And what time would it go in from?
Like 6:30 to 9:00 would be the music, 9:30. I think I wrote 10:00 just to be safe.
Oh, okay. Any, any questions, concerns?
No, no issues at all.
No issues?
It's well in advance.
This is your first time doing this?
Um, we did one last year, it was a different time.
Okay.
Mr. President, move approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes applications for one day entertainment. Next one, please.
Licenses requiring public hearing for vote. We've already covered both, both items, Edward Timas and Van Lee.
Mr. President, may I suggest one item of housekeeping?
Sure.
Can I move to seal the minutes from executive session?
While we're up here, before we move on, let's...
Second.
We have a second. Motion to approve the minutes from executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Okay, may proceed.
Next item is Item 8, Communications. First is...
I'm sorry, did we not vote on the...
No.
Yeah, we still have those.
We haven't. It's a public...
Oh, so we want to go back to, okay, I apologize. Application for vitulating license, Edward Timas, doing businesses as work and sandwich, 1055 South Broadway, East Providence, 02914.
Is the applicant present?
He was, right? Yeah.
Okay, he was, okay. Well, this is a public comment. Does anyone from the public have any questions or concerns?
For the purpose of clarification for the public, could we explain? I think the gentleman was here, he might have been confused when we talked about combining, and he, and he left, but could either the attorney or the city clerk explain what the vitulating license would present?
It's a license to sell food within the city. That's all it is.
It's already established.
I assume, I don't know that for a fact, I assume so, but it's, licenses for to sell food are requiring a public hearing, so that's why we did the ones that didn't require a public hearing first, which was a holiday sales, and now we're just going on a public hearing for the licensing for the food sales.
So if they didn't have a license before tonight to sell food, what were they selling? What was it?
If I could, can I interject? Okay. Basically, what it is, it's a, it's a new business. He's a current business owner within East Providence, and he's opening a new business.
So it's a new business?
So this is a new business with a new location, so they have to get the...
Okay, I'll answer that.
Yep.
There's, Mr. President, if there's no one who wants to comment, public hearing would move approval.
Let me, let me just close public comment first. Just ask the public one more time, does anyone have any question or concern that they would like to address at this point? Time we got on the application? If not, public comment is closed. Now, Mr. Councilman, may we proceed?
I would so move approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item?
Next item is Van Lee, doing businesses grab and go, 350 North Broadway, 02916.
Is the applicant here?
He too left.
Or representative? Oh, he left.
He left after the first one, yes.
Oh, okay. All right, so a similar situation here, then. Okay.
So this is the same thing, a new business, probably in a vacant building, which is a good idea to see new business coming here?
If I'm not mistaken, 350 North Broadway, this is an existing building. He's renewing, is he renewing his license? Grab and go is right on North Broadway over...
Hold on just a moment.
Doesn't say renewal, says application for...
We have the application for the holiday license, we have the application for the vitulating license.
This is an existing business.
This is, yeah.
Okay.
New owner.
New owner.
New owner.
Okay. This is for public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to speak for or against this? Anyone from the public wanting to speak for or against this? If not, public comment is closed. At the pleasure of the council. Councilman, did you make a motion prior to, or no?
I, I started to, but I'll make it now.
I don't mean to press you, yes, I thought you was making one.
Right, I'm glad to see that a new owner is going to try to keep the business going, and it's good for the city. I would move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. That concludes the licensing requiring public hearings. Next item, please.
Next item is Communications. May all communications, item number one, may all let our response to Councilman Morado's proposed resolution, resolution establishing the language of a proposed amendment to the East Providence City Charter as will be voted on at a subsequent charter referendum.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Fratato?
It is my understanding that this resolution will be tabled until a later date, so I will also table this communication until a later date.
Very good.
That was easy.
Okay. With that being said, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Road races, Providence Marathon, Riley Rancourt.
Good evening, council.
Good evening. Can you state your name for the racket, please?
Riley Rancourt.
Okay. And what are you looking to accomplish here?
We're seeking approval for our 13th year running the Providence Marathon through the city. It's going to be about 1,300 people. Times affected will be 8:00 AM to about 1:00 PM, and it'll be primarily on the bike path. There'll be no roads closed.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
What's the, the date?
Um, one second.
Presuming it's a Saturday.
It is a Saturday. I unfortunately do not have the date on me. I believe it's the first Saturday in May, which would be...
You mean, you mean August?
May.
This year, next year?
Next year.
Next year, okay.
Yes.
Oh, next year?
Yes.
So that's, that's close enough.
We'll get the date before then, council.
Fair enough. I believe it's May 9th.
So can we, I mean, is it premature to...
This is just the communication. I guess he's just asking, giving us a little warning, and then we'll, through the clerk's office, we'll talk to him about any approvals he may need at a later date.
Okay.
I guess he wants to know if we might have an objection to that now, so we won't waste his time.
Not unless something comes up drastically between now and then, but I don't see any obstacles as to why.
Not blocking any streets or anything.
Rumor is that you're going to run the race, so...
But even, it's usually vetted through the police department and clerk's office in an event that they need to go through the streets, so I don't see an issue or concern about it at this moment.
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes Communications. Moving right on, moving right along to public comment.
Public comment. The first person we have is Matthew Barber, 693 North Broadway, East Providence. The docket item topic is building inspector and East Providence Police.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking each and every one of council members and everybody in attendance tonight for affording me the opportunity to express my grievances, my opinions, and concerns.
Excuse me, sir, can you just state your name for the public?
Yes, my name is Matthew J. Barber. I currently am a lawful tenant at 693 North Broadway, and I beg your pardon for my appearance because it is subsequent to my dilemma. On June, on June 10th, I had a city building inspector, Ted Isabella, deem my dwelling, two-family dwelling uninhabitable. He then told me to hand over my keys, leave the property, don't come back. I lost about 25 days there until I received this here, the code violations. I don't know if you guys would like to take a look at that. I have to pass these down. That's double-sided. I finally got five days back in, corrected my end of the violation, then was religiously harassed by the landlord. East Providence Police eventually went rogue, used physical violence. I stood my ground. They would not press charges, and it's my, my belief that the building inspector, Ted Isabella, is using a self-help tactic. I don't know what claim or stake he has to this property, whether it be a favor for someone or whatnot, but it's my belief that he is using, using the boarding up of the home, the uninhabitable of the home, as a self-help tactic to help the landlord, because she has been showing the apartment to potential tenants in the past days. And I also am to believe that there was no official order for the boarding yet, which also brings up another question of mine, who's paying for the boarding up of the home? Is that the taxpayers, or is that the homeowner? Because that can run upwards of $3,000. So I'm just basically asking for, at face, it's a civil matter, but since the building inspector came in, made it, it seems like he got a little personal with it, went above and beyond. I am asking for council members to maybe possibly look further into the matter, maybe provide me with more information as to what's going on, what I can do. I am currently sleeping outside, and I do not want to create an eyesore for the city of East Providence. And happy birthday, Mr. Rodrick.
So I'm going to ask you real quick and brief, because this is a public comment, but you don't own the property?
I do not.
Okay, and, and was deemed structural unsound?
Yes, and the violation, the prescription for those codes was 30 days to correct.
For the homeowner?
For the homeowner. I did some corrections myself, what I could. Also, I, there was no notice, I had no notice. She wanted me out. It was a self-help eviction. I did what I could to correct in the last five days of the 30 days that I was allotted, because they did not allot me the full 30 days. But I wasn't aware I had 30 days. I lost 25 days. I did as many corrections as I could, and then they just persisted to just harass and use the police to harass me. I went today, and my things were thrown out in the yard. I hope they're still in the yard now. All things of value have either been damaged or stolen. I was told by the police today, when I went to file a report, that she had every right, because I didn't pay rent, which I have been paying rent, that's, but that's for the courts to decide, that she had every right to throw my stuff out in the yard, and now that it's out in the yard, it's my responsibility to store that. It doesn't take a lawyer, it doesn't take, you know, a legal scholar to know that that's not true. After I left from filing the report, they chased me down about a quarter mile down the street, presented me with what looked to be just a makeshift no trespass order, and asked me to, demanded that I sign it or I'd be under arrest. Again, I stood my ground, refused. They decided not to arrest me. They decided to, I guess, call it a refusal, and as the officer was walking away, he said, "Thanks for wasting our time." I said, "Well, if you feel that way, I apologize." He said, "No, you don't. Go kill yourself." And I was on my way, and...
Okay, so because we're limited on our public comment time, I'm going to ask if perhaps maybe the mayor's office or someone else can, the mayor's office, Mr. Fratato, will get to this?
Thank you.
And work with you on that?
Thank you, that's all I ask.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all your time. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, one, you're all set, Mr. Fratato. One quick question of either the solicitor or maybe Mr. Fratato. Is the, do we have a building inspector per se? I'm under the impression he's retired. I know this other person is in that office, but...
We have a code enforcement officer? We don't have a, we technically don't have a building official. They're two different positions.
Right. But the position filled by Mr. Quattrucci...
Is open.
Is open.
Building official.
Building official, okay. Is that being advertised?
I'm not aware of that. I don't know. I don't want to give you any answer that I'm not aware of.
Okay. We'll check further. Okay.
Just so you know, the gentleman came to see the law department today and we're looking into it as well.
Okay. All right. Good. Next one, please.
Kirby Fattato, Good Neighbors Soup Kitchen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Good. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Kirby Fattato. I live on Dora Avenue in Riverside. I'm right across from the Good Neighbors Soup Kitchen located in the basement of St. Brennan's. I'm here tonight because on a regular basis, myself and my children have witnessed constant fighting, men and women publicly urinating in broad daylight within 100 feet of my front door, people on my property going through my trash cans, people sleeping on the sidewalks at 6:00 AM, clients of Good Neighbors drinking, openly doing drugs on the side of the building between the hours of 6:30 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday. There are hordes of people that hang out, smoking, drinking alcohol, cursing, fighting. I can go on and on and on. During these times, I cannot open my windows on a nice day to keep the foul language and the marijuana smell out of my home. I cannot take my small children for walks on our street to avoid the clients of Good Neighbors excessive cursing, staring at us, and asking my three-year-old for cigarettes or money. I've also been harassed by a client of the shelter a few weeks ago while placing my one-year-old and three-year-old in my car in my own driveway. He was harassing me about my Nest camera, stating I was recording him and violating his rights. After this incident, I'm afraid to go to my own driveway while the shelter is open. I have personally met with my husband, with the director of Good Neighbors, and nothing has come from it. I contacted the pastor of St. Brennan's and he told me that the need for the shelter outweigh my legitimate concerns. The litter is appalling. Used condoms, cigarette butts, beer cans, nip bottles are everywhere. Lastly, I'd like to say, we are not against Good Neighbors or the work that they do. I do believe they are an asset to the people of Rhode Island. However, they simply do not belong in a residential neighborhood. No one can predict or prevent the behaviors of the mentally ill or substance abusers, excuse me. There are children and families surrounding the shelter, and it's sad that it's been allowed to go on as long as it has. This is a nice neighborhood and unfortunately, it feels like Kennedy Plaza every day. It needs to relocate because the safety of our children are at risk, our home values are at risk, and the simple enjoyment of our homes that many take for granted. I do have pictures, I have videos, I have emails from the pastor and the director, and emails from my neighbors that I've all sent to Councilman Roderick's. Thank you.
I'm actually, hello all, I'm actually next on the list, Tiffany Ribka, but Neighbors...
Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Oh, sure. It's Tiffany Ribka. I am Neighbors with Kirby and just wanted to kind of piggyback on her that I've seen people urinate as well, people sleeping on the stairs. They smoke and loiter directly across from our driveway, constantly yelling foul language. They're loud. They don't have respect for residents that are around. Many small children live in our neighborhood. Elderly people, they're not respectful. They've come over into our driveway when animals have gotten loose and they run into our garage. That's happened on occasion. We've noticed people bathing right across from the driveway, and it's been going on for a while. We've been in contact with the police department and with Kirby's help, Councilman Roderick's. So it's just an unfortunate circumstance in a really nice neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
And I think I know the answer, but for this particular organization, there's no licensing, there's no really authority of the city with regard to their operation or, you know, how they conduct themselves, right? I mean, there's no avenue through that way to, you know, have these folks kind of appear before us and explain what's going on. Am I correct?
I don't know the specifics. I've heard this before. This is a church, correct?
Yes.
And it's a soup kitchen that they run out of a church? I'd have to look into it more, but I mean, obviously, because it's a church, it's a little higher standard of what the city can do, but I don't believe that they're exempt from all regulation. But it's something I have to look into.
But Good Neighbors is the name of the association, right? Because if I'm not mistaken, they come in front of us for CBG?
Yeah, it's the name of the program, the soup kitchen.
Okay.
What I can do, Councilman Kahoon, I can inquire with the police department to see what that looks like. I know there's ordinances, like quiet time ordinances that we have in the city. If things are happening around 6:30 in the morning, that is outside the hours of quiet time, but I can, I can go ahead and do some research with the police department and circle back. So we have some answers for everybody.
And if I can, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I don't think it would be out of bounds to, you know, invite either the, you know, the president of the board or some members of the board to come and speak to us about, you know, the issues that they're running into and any plans they might have to fix those, based on what I'm hearing. This sounds like a pretty reasonable request.
Agree. And just to add, I want to verify and thank the neighbors who were speaking tonight because they've been very patient over a situation that's been going on for some time now. And I will say that with thanks to Director Fattato, he has been communicating. The mayor and Mr. Fattato have gotten back to me and they want to set up a community meeting. So they're doing some things. The police chief said they will increase patrols. However, I think the neighbors will say it's time for maybe relocation. I've been there, I've seen some of the disgusting debris that's been talked about on the sidewalk. On one visitation there, there's part of the lot that is not directly the problem of the Good Neighbors program, but there were some five abandoned cars. I mean, so abandoned, you couldn't move them. They had to be lifted out of there and two boats, and they'd been there for some years. And looking over the cars, I was a bit stunned when a woman appeared at the door and it was a woman living in one of the trucks. Happened to be a police officer riding by and I waved, he waved back and I said, "No, I'm not waving. Could you come over here?" And the officer was very good and he had the woman leave the area. So it's a serious concern for a very nice residential neighborhood. I know tonight, we're not prepared to take any formal action, but this has been going on since April in terms of my involvement, so it's something we've tried not to be dramatic about, but it's July, it's now time to get some relief for these neighbors, for the neighborhood. So I would assure the neighbors that, and all of my colleagues here have been made aware of this, I've let them have copies of emails or videos, watching, well, I won't even get into it, it's pretty bad, some of the scenes. So we're on it. Bureaucracy takes some time, but continue to keep in touch with me. And Councilman Marado has been by that site with me also. And we're definitely on it and will continue to be. And if it takes a turn for the worse, give me a call and I'll put the president here right on it. And Mr. Fattato and the mayor and the police chief will do what we can do.
Thank you, Councilman.
Next.
Next person on public comment is Marie Lombardi for the same issue, Good Neighbors Soup Kitchen.
You're all together? Okay. All right. Very good. We got your point.
And Van Lee, I believe he was just signing in before. We had already approved his business matters.
So that concludes public comment?
It concludes public comment.
Okay. So we can move right on to the next item, please.
Councilmember Communications, status of bonding for new high school construction bond to include anticipated bonding schedule, amounts, and projected financing rate. Discussion only, Councilman Kahoon.
I asked Mr. Moore to come join us, I know, just for the council's edification. I think we've talked about this before. Before we see the invoices come to us for payment, there are, you know, bi-weekly meetings between members of the school building committee, school finance, and the city, specifically the mayor and Mr. Moore, to discuss, you know, the sort of the cash flow, the progress of the project, et cetera. But I know that there have been concerns and questions from the council before with regard to, you know, how long the city can continue to pay the bills before the bond funds come in, when we anticipate that bond funds might be available, how much might be coming in, et cetera, et cetera. So I asked Mr. Moore if he would come and kind of enlighten us on those topics. So that's where we are.
If it pleases, I'll give a brief overview of where we're at, where we think we'll be going, some of the questions we still have to answer, and then afterwards, I'll gladly answer any questions I can. So as you know, it was approved for $189.5 million for the new high school. We have started paying a few months ago, school invoices, six, $700,000. It's up to about $1 million a month. And that will continue on, obviously, for the next couple of years. Every few months, they'll enter a separate phase and the amounts we pay will continually increase. In, say, June, it'll jump to about $2 million. When they really get into construction, it'll be as much as $6, $7 million a month. So that being said, we're paying about $1 million a month, and we kind of figure that will continue for the next six months or so and then ratchet up slowly to about $2 million. Now, to pay for that, the, we have a $6 million, $16 million advance on our reimbursement. So the state has $16 million in kitty for us, so when we spend this money, and I've been working with the school finance director and he's been sending this information to RIDE, so the money that we have spent, we will send them the invoices and they will give us our 54% of. So pretty much everything we spend the following month, once we get caught up, we will be reimbursed. So instead of spending $1 million a month, that's out to about half a million. That being said, we always run out of money January, February, March and have to get some tans. Well, this year, we'll also have to get some bands, some bond anticipation notes. And we're putting the cash flows together. I'm estimating we'll need to go to borrowing probably in January. Now, in talking with our financial advisors, we think on the band borrowing in January, we'll probably borrow what we think will cover the next 12 months. And according to the cash flow schedule that we get every month at our meeting that Councilman Kahoon referenced, it'll be about $60 million, plus the eight or 10 that we've already advanced to the school, that 50% that we haven't received. So we think we'll go to bond for about, sorry, to band for about $70 million. And that'll get us through for 12 months. And the following January, we'll do another band for the next six months, which we think will be about $50 million. That puts us in June of 2021. Now, the school is due to open in September of '21. So we're hoping to go to bond in June of 2021, and we're not sure whether we'll do one, two, or three bonds. We know for sure we'll do one bond that'll go through RIBEC for the school housing aid, which we have to do. And that will be for somewhere between a minimum of $135, because that's the amount that RIDE will reimburse us on, up to, it could be all of it. But we think that maybe there's a piece of about $30 million that's not going to be reimbursed by anybody. So the bond will be between $135 and $160, we think, with RIBEC. And right now, we think we can get about $30 million to go through the RIB, the infrastructure bank. If we can do that, we can save between 20 and 33% on the interest. We think that would save another $3, $4 million if we can do that. Now, some of the questions we haven't answered yet is that you want to go to bond, but you, when you do it, you want to be substantially complete because the way RIDE defines the housing aid is as of June 30th, for you to receive your housing aid the next fiscal year, you have to be substantially complete by June 30th. And when we talked to the consultants, the school will be open in August or September, end of August, beginning of September. The question is, will it be substantially complete in June? We don't have that answer. It's too far out. The second question with that is that, well, we're not going to ride for the whole 190, we're not, we're not being reimbursed on 195. We're only being reimbursed on 135. So do we only have to be two-thirds substantially complete? And that's a question we've got to get answered. Because if it's two-thirds, then we'll be fine. And because if you don't, if we try to go to bond in June and it's not substantially complete, the following year, we'll have bond payments, which means all of a sudden you'll have this $8 million, $9 million debt service, and you're not getting any of that money back from RIDE. So that's why we're trying to figure out what's the best way to do this. The bands versus the bonds and when the best time to go to bonds. We said last week with our financial advisors, they're running some scenarios for bands and bonds. The questions are, you know, like I said, it could be one, two, or three. We've met with the infrastructure bank. We need to sit down with RIDE to see, you know, what makes up that 135 so that we can carve that piece out. And then we can go to the infrastructure bank. And so there's some things that we still have to decide as far as when we want to do this and the best way to do this. One of the big concerns is, we've been told we're going to get 54% approximately, and we're eligible for up to another 20. But we were told that RIDE will not make that determination till we're 100% complete with the whole project. So even though the school is open in September, it won't be done really almost for another year because you've got to knock down the other building, you've got to do landscaping and put the fields in.
Malcolm, if I can interrupt you on that. We will brief that to the building committee last week, last Monday.
Okay.
And we agree that that's fairly preposterous for anybody who's trying to do long-term planning for a municipality. I know that the building committee has been in touch with Representative Amori. Representative Amori has been in contact with RIDE, and he's trying to get some clarity on that very matter. Again, it's impossible for us to plan unless we have some sort of agreement or some sense from RIDE which way they're going to go. You know, to date, all indications are that they've been agreeable to the 74% reimbursement. We certainly can't do good financial planning if they're not telling us that until, you know, the 11th hour. So we're working on that, too.
That'd be great. The sooner we know, the better.
Yes, sir.
You had asked about the interest rate on the bands. It'll net out an interest rate of 1.99, so say 2%. The concern is the interest will be maybe in total close to, close to $2 million for that first year. None of that's reimbursable by RIDE. Now, if we go by their drawdown schedules, I could take that $70 million and invest it while, you know, and just draw it down piecemeal. So I should be able to earn about half of that back. So I think our net would be closer to 1%. So we'd save like a million of that $2 million. It's still a lot of money. So I spoke to them earlier this week and the question was, they were going to go back and again, talk about if we could borrow maybe that $30 million first from RIB, maybe that would be a better way to go so we wouldn't have to do the band of 70. But there's a lot of pieces still up in the air that we're trying to figure out. But this is kind of the game plan that we have. One of the questions was, along with this, is that we're trying to go to the infrastructure bank for energy efficient, which actually includes the fields, the soccer fields and all, because it's on cement and so it's more of a drainage and issue. But I guess in the past, RIDE has said if you went to National Grid and got some rebates, then they would reduce their funding by like amount. So it makes no sense for us to jump through this hoop and spend additional monies to go for a separate bond if RIDE's going to say, "Well, yeah, you saved $2 million here, so I'm cutting $2 million out of what we're reimbursing you." So there's still some questions, but we've got, you know, time to flush this out. But, you know, I'm hoping to get the cash flows done within the next couple of weeks so we can actually plug these numbers in and see exactly where we're at and how much, you know, whether it's January or February 1st or when we have to borrow. Because then you've got to work backwards because it takes them, say, 60 days from the date that we start. So, you know, if you said January 1, well, now you're at 11-1. So it just, it creeps up on us quickly.
So Malcolm, so as these invoices continue to come in and get paid through the city, how quickly are we getting reimbursed as a city?
Um...
On the 54%? How long does it take? So if you submit?
Once we submit, we get them back in two or three weeks.
Oh, that quick?
So we've gotten, you know, we're pretty pleased. Now, he submitted the older invoices first that we've already paid, but I still think that we'll get them all within 30 days. So the school committee approves them, you approve them, we pay them that Friday, and hopefully we'll get to, well, okay, once we pay them, we'll go ahead and submit them. But, yeah, they've been pretty good at, on their return.
The intent of that program was that it's supposed to be pay-as-you-go, so I would be surprised and disappointed to hear anything else.
I just wasn't expecting that quickly to be quite...
Well, no. I mean, for most of the reimbursed state aid projects that the school department does, you're looking at like a year, right? I mean, it has to be vetted and inspected, et cetera, et cetera. So, but again, all we're done, you know, what's done now is essentially, you know, the architects are basically 100% through detailed design. You're not looking at construction documents until probably October-ish. So while we have broken ground and while we have begun early bid packages, that's because we're doing, you know, kind of this phased approach to get the building up quicker.
Mr. President, please. If I could ask Councilman Kahoon, as the students and staff and faculty arrive in September, late August, is it now, what will they be seeing? What will they encounter?
So physically? Yeah. If you take a stroll through the grounds there now, you'll notice that, you know, the bayside soccer field, if you will, for lack of a better term, is gone. The light posts have been removed. Scoreboard's still up, I think, at least it was the other day. And there are a number of construction vehicles on site doing various early staging things, right? Those will be there. The presence will intensify. They're starting to do some kind of early sighting of, you know, where the school is, you know, is projected to go. The pool will likely be gone at the start of the school year. So currently, the pool has mat abatement and demolition project is underway with the abatement stopped being done now, demolition will follow. But the projection and the schedule is to have that done before the start of the school year for obvious reasons, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further, any questions from the council?
So if I could, Malcolm, just one follow-up question. So when we look at next year's budget, as we're trying to work that out in October and November, we should anticipate to see a significant, you know, bond service or debt service projection based on whatever the strategy is for bands, for bonds, whatever that might be, beginning in January, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I've run some preliminary numbers, and the total bond will be, say, $173. I took out the $16 million we got. And at, if we only got the 54%, we have, everybody's heard about the sync bond money that was there, and that was about $2.3 million. So the total amount for the, when all the bonds come due, will be about $7 million a year. And you minus the 2.3, you're at about 4.7. So at 54%, we'd have to come up with $4.7 million more than we currently have. On the other side, if you got the full 74, you'd need another 3.1 million. I've heard the number kicked around at 70%, so I put that one in, but you're looking at $3.5 million more. And we really have... And we really have about three years to get there. And we had talked about increasing and putting an extra million in for the last few years. We didn't do it this year, so we're a little bit behind the eight ball on that. But I project it's going to be a tough budget year.
For next year?
For next year, yes. This year, we're fine. Next year, the upcoming budget. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Yep.
Thank you for that input. Madam Quirk, we proceed to the next item.
Status of fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Financial audits, discussion only. Councilman Cahoon.
So I'll, just some context on why I'm asking this question, Malcolm, other than the fact that I bring this up fairly frequently. I understand that as we move into the stage of taking on significant debt, the various death wars, if you will, are going to want to see regular financial documents from the city. I know that one of the most important ones to them, or at least I understand that one of the most important things to them, is that audit, that year-on-year audit. So I think it's going to be important for us to make sure that that's delivered and completed timely on an annual basis. So I just wanted to see if I could get a status on where we are on those.
We've completed the '17 audit. Now, it was completed late, but we, right now, we know it's going to be late because we have to wait for a component from the state. Now, we got that information in, at the end of September. I thought, I was told that we were closer, we had more issues than we thought, we had some staffing issues on both the city and school side. '17 didn't get done until February 22 of this year. Right after that, we rolled right into '18, and we told, we had to meet with the auditor general when you're late, and we told him that we think that at that time, we could have everything to the auditors by the end of July, and that they could have a draft and probably have it done by the end of August, barring any unforeseen items that may pop up. We spoke to the auditor general's office last week. We're still on target with that. We're actually sending them something to officially say that we're going to only need the extension through the end of August, that we've all talked, we agreed, we can get all of the documents to the auditors by the end of July. And so I think we're back on track from when we finished the last one. The state gives you six months to get your audit done from when, from the end of the fiscal year. So if you went from the 22nd of February, that puts you to the end of July, or end of August. So I, we should be on target going forward. The only question would be, we have to wait for the pension numbers to come in from the state. And even though we're, we think we'll have all our stuff to the auditors by the end of July, we don't have the information from the state yet. Now, they did say we should have draft numbers, hopefully also by the end of July. So that's the only, only thing that may hold us up. So we could have it all ready to go. But you're right, that is a concern. And that was one of the things we're talking about going to bond here, that we can't have kind of that hiccup because if we're going to bond, we have to have the '18 done.
So given that, from my understanding of the charter, really having the audit done is a responsibility of the council, right? I mean, it's, and given that we've kind of seen delays with these audits in past years, do you think there is any benefit to going out for, you know, resoliciting competition for auditors to, you know, come in and maybe do this going forward? You know, maybe under a new three, five-year contract, something along those lines?
No, the auditors we have are, do a good job. We have to go out every five years, well, you go out every three years. But if you get the same auditors the second time, they can only get it for two years per the charter. I can only have the same auditing firm for five years. So we're always turning over auditing firms.
And we've had these folks for...
This is the second year.
Second year. Okay.
And, and so I'm not sure you could even have time to go out and get another one if you wanted to because we're just finalizing this, and our fiscal year ends 10-31. And, you know, the holdup was not, was not them on this one.
Well, that's important, that's important to know. Is there anything that, you know, the council could provide by way of help with the state to help you get the data that you need or resolutions?
No, I think that a lot of it, at least on our side, was getting the staffing in, both on the city and school side. I spoke to their finance director, and, you know, he's pretty pleased with where they're at. We don't see a problem for the, for the next audit coming up. Again, you've got to, you've got to wait for the state pension numbers. And, and they've been getting better every year, getting them done sooner. And we're the only one that has this problem, and that's because we have the off-year year-end. Everybody else has a 6-30 year-end, ours is 10-31.
I might encourage you to reach out to John McNamie, who is the, he was the chair of the building committee in North Providence. He also happens to be on our building committee and the brother of our superintendent. But he's been through this before, and he might have a couple of tips on, you know, what we can do to kind of shake that information loose. So if that might be helpful, I can certainly put you in touch with John, and, you know, you can ask him whatever questions you might, might have.
The auditor general thought that going forward, that we may be able to get the draft information quicker so that we can already have it and everything's set. We're just waiting for this final piece. So if anybody needs it, it's there. And, you know, again, you could explain that it's here, the auditors will sign off, that there's no changes really to be made unless something changes with the information we got from the state.
Okay.
So it does seem to be getting better. I just don't think come April 30th of next year, we'll have that information. I mean, they're, they said July of this year. So each year, they get a month or two better, but...
So it'll still be late?
Most likely.
Mr. President, so Malcolm, in a nutshell, is it safe to say that the city has done all we can do as far as you're concerned? The one piece left, we're waiting for state data?
Yeah, not quite. We've got a couple of small pieces they're following up on. They were in last week. They were, they're supposed to be in next week to get anything finalized. They were going to send me something tomorrow, they said, so I could start getting some data together to give to them next week.
They being the state?
No, the auditing firm.
Oh.
Bloom Shapiro. And so, you know, they come in and they're just, they need, they're just doing more test work. Oh, you know, I need this last little piece or this last little piece. Because they, they just, you know, they come in and we give them schedules, and then come back with some follow-up questions. Oh, I need this, you know, you gave me A, B, and D, and I need C. Or you gave me C, but I need you to qualify. They sat with me, a lot of times what they do is they go through your, all your expenses, and if there is a variance more than 10% or $5,000, then they've got to sit with me, and I have to explain why. You know, and okay, they didn't do that. And so they've done that. So there's, there's, as far as I know, there's nothing, nothing big. It's just, oh, I need a copy of this invoice, I need this other schedule that they're trying to finalize.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Malcolm. When you finish reading that book, Madam Quirk, I, you want to move on to the next item, please?
Thank you, Council President. That would be school committee four-year terms, discussion only. Council President Britton.
I just wanted to put this on briefly. I know there's a point in time that we had discussed the possibility of extending the school terms from two-year to four-year, whether or not it was going to run in conjunction with the city council terms or stagger it. We did have this conversation, and I just wanted to bring it up again to see what direction we want to go in as far as this is concerned in a resolution, submitting a resolution to the representatives at the State House as well for this.
So I'll throw my thought out there and start from there. When I went back and I talked to the school committee, when we got their initial draft resolution, I think there was a preference for them to have some kind of staggering, and not just with the city council, but on, on the school committee itself. And I think through, you know, through our discussion, what the city solicitor pointed out, that really what the residents voted for was throw everybody out at the same time or not, right? So basically, everybody gets elected on the same cycle. So if they were to begin a four-year term, or if we were to support a four-year term for them to the General Assembly, really what we should be supporting is a four-year term that's in sync with our own. Mike, correct me if, if I'm wrong on any of that. That would be the, the by-rule correct thing to do.
Correct. So it's a choice of the council, but the voters voted to have everyone on a four-year term at the same time. And for you to do that, the resolution would have to be passed at the General Assembly effective next election cycle. So everyone start at the same four-year term next, for two years from now. So 2022, correct?
Yes, 2022.
Right. Okay. So it's really just in your hands. I mean, the General Assembly won't be back in succession until January, but if that's what the intent of the council is, we'd have to get that resolution and ask them to ratify the charter change for 2022.
Okay. Well, no, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this was something we talked about early on, and again, that it didn't fall by the wayside. It was brought to my attention several months ago. I forgot to put it on, to be quite honest with you. And I wanted to ignite the conversation on this to see what direction we want to head in going forward.
Refresh my memory, because so much went on with all of that. Ended up with Board of Elections and court decisions, and so the vote said four years for both bodies?
Yes.
Okay. And they're still on the two-year?
Yes.
So it needs to be either ignored or codified. And it can't be staggered, which I agree with you, it should be. Like years past, you had three members, one election, two another, never had to deal with a wholesale change, no institutional memory, no history, no experience. But that, that wasn't the way the ballot was worded, and so we can't fix that easily. Could be fixed with a new, new ballot question, I guess.
Well, I mean, I guess our resolution doesn't have to be in line with what the ballot said, but I don't think that would be a particularly good idea. It sounds like that would be asking for trouble.
I wouldn't recommend that.
Yeah. And it doesn't sound like there's any reason to do that. You know, they, they finish out their two-year term cycles, they have another election in 2020, and then we pick up from there with ours in sync in 2022.
Okay.
Councilman, the only reason why the Board of Elections did rule that the council could have four-year terms, and, and that was unappealed, they did make a very specific decision, though, because the state reserves its right to education, that they needed General Assembly approval to switch the school committee to four-year terms, and that has not yet been done. So that's why we're still at the two-year term for the city, excuse me, for the school committee.
Should we make that request without the school committee requesting it of us first?
They did. I think the school committee will request it to us first.
They did.
But they asked for the staggered. So why don't I take the action on the next time that I go talk to the school committee? I'll bring this up, and we'll say, hey, you know, this is what we're thinking. We're going to go forward with the resolution for four years if that's kind of what the council's thinking, in cycle with ours, starting in 2022. Get a nod from them and then come back. Does that sound fair?
Just get the conversation rolling.
Yeah.
And we obviously have some time, and then we can submit a resolution, and going forward, we have something on the books for it. That's all.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item will be skipped due to Councilwoman Suze's absence. So we'll move to item number five, which is ward for a wire drop, discussion only, Councilman Marado.
So I put this on the docket for discussion. My original intentions were to put it for a resolution, for a vote requesting through the mayor's office that a wire drop be put into place at this location in Riverside. Just to give a little history, so for the past few months now, I've been asking about a wire drop to further expand our Christmas tree lighting celebrations in Riverside Square. For the past couple of years, the tree has been placed in the back of Borealis, which I appreciate them offering their space, but it has grown beyond their capacity. So speaking to some of the residents, such as groups as the Riverside Renaissance and so on, we feel that it would be a great location between the bike path behind Borealis and that little section of Potucket Avenue. And the reason why that section has been chosen, not only for the space, as this event grows and numbers, it's logistically safe for residents to congregate. We can safely block off portions of the road and have bands, if they would like, dance groups, or whoever else, as other communities do, and make this a really great event for the residents in my ward in Riverside. For the past few weeks, months, I've been asking for an update. I understand that there's a grant out there to improve that area. In fact, I sent an email a week ago Monday requesting an update from the landscape architect, which I heard was going to go out and look at that area, but I didn't get any responses and have not been getting any responses. So out of my frustration for this simple one task that I've asked for since I've been elected, and not being able to get a simple $2,000 wire drop, which, by the way, the Riverside Renaissance has offered to pay half of it for the installation, I was going to put forward a resolution requesting that this wire drop be placed. Although we are in July, before we know it, it will be in holiday season. They're already putting out commercials for Christmas trees on QVC. Don't ask me why I watch that, but I do. So before you know it, it'll be here. And I don't want to see us once again go through, you know, we could make this community event a lot better than the previous years and have it continue to grow for the residents of Riverside. When I was going to put forward this resolution, I got word, I was advised, and this is to me very disturbing, through the mayor's office, that if I did so, that I could potentially be investigated for violating the city charter or interfering with the city business. And I didn't take that lightly, and I find that very disturbing, to be threatened like that. So in abundance of caution, what I would like to do, and I want to call point of order, Mr. President, because right now, I'm the one that's speaking, and Mr. Fattaro's time to come up and speak on behalf of us has been already. So I'm going to call point of order right now. As in abundance of caution, the mayor has raised a certain concern of me, a member of this council, drafting a resolution regarding a wire drop for Christmas tree lighting. And the mayor suggested that I will be investigated for making that request and a formal play resolution. For a member of this council to the mayor, that I could be in violation of a charter provision, but before putting this charter provision forward, this resolution, correction, this resolution forward in abundance of caution, I would like to ask the solicitor, would you please research this issue and advise this council to whether or not there is any violation of any charter provisions that we would, we should be aware of so that we can proceed in a cautious and measured way? My next question would have been, had I put forward this resolution, had members of the council voted in favor of this resolution, would they be subject to an investigation And I would like to ask this formal request and this written legal opinion for the next council meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Marado, may I ask one question with regard to the wire drop? And this is my understanding, so, you know, if this is incorrect, but I see nothing that prevents the council from establishing a line item in the 2000, now we're into 2019, in the 2019 budget for, for exactly that work, right? There's nothing we have to direct any, we don't have to direct anybody in particular to do it, but we certainly could say, I think you said the estimate is somewhere around $3,000, is that right?
I believe it's between $200 and $2,300. We got an invoice. See, the work I did when I wasn't, I wasn't getting any answers.
Yeah.
I contacted National Grid, and they advised to get a tax ID number, have a licensed electrician go out. I forwarded all that information to the mayor's office. I did get an estimate. I did meet with Steve Kudo at one point. I did get an estimate. And some of the questions that were, that I had, and I had forwarded this through the mayor's office again, the estimate was to cut underneath the sidewalk, and I was confused as to why. Because my understanding, when you do... understanding, when you do a wire drop, the meter is placed on a pole high enough that no one can touch, but they connect the power to it, as they do with many municipalities. If you go up Hope Street in Bristol, if you go through Warren, during Christmas time, you see all those trees decorated.
Sure.
City trees. And that, to me, in my mind, that's my intention. That was the intention. So I never got, I never really got clarification as to why the sidewalk needed to be cut. But, so the estimate that, the invoice that was sent was around $2,300, I believe. So it's really not a lot of money. And the frustration is that it's such a simple thing that it didn't, it doesn't require, you know, this item to be placed on a docket as many times as it has been. We have better things to do than discuss a Christmas tree wire drop. But my frustration is if I can't get this completed for the residents of Riverside, how am I going to get anything else that, you know, we have, I have set forward for short-term and long-term goals for Riverside? This one simple thing has been very frustrating on my part. So, and it just got disturbing to me. It was very disturbing, and it got a little bit more complicated. And this past week, and this has been on my mind this whole week, and I really didn't appreciate that, especially being someone that's in law enforcement, the implication of what that would mean for me if that was actually, you know, done. So.
Okay. Any further questions or points that might be taken at this end?
Are you saying you're withdrawing this for tonight, or?
I am withdrawing it for tonight. It's not for a vote. It was just for discussion only.
Okay.
I will not move forward with any resolutions until I get a written opinion from the solicitor as to whether or not a request of such, of this nature, or any request for that matter, is in violation of any charter provision.
But for the record, and so you know, you know, a resolution to, you know, earmark that amount of money for this effort, I certainly would be in support of. So just FYI, if that's the route that you think is best to take, I'm behind that. So.
I actually appreciate that. And it sounds like that's a more viable way of approaching this and to get it done. So I guess we'll have to have discussions on that. I'm not, at this point, I'm not familiar as to how that process works, being that I'm with the council. But something definitely worth looking into.
Sure. But also, we have an account under celebrations. I don't know if it would come under that, but we should be able to solve a, what I could call a junior high school issue without going to ordinances and courts and police. And, you know, it's getting, you know, out of hand.
I agree. And by no means do I think it should be coming out of account for celebrations. I mean, there's enough money in the bucket for something like this. Having it come out of the council budget, I don't, I don't see. I hear what you're saying, though. Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Next item is appointments for the planning board. Dr. Allen Diello Jr., this is a new appointment, and this is for the vote.
May I ask one question, just point of clarification? I saw Dr. Diello's name associated with both the planning board and the personnel hearing board. Just to confirm, the recommended appointment is to the planning board?
It is just to the planning board. Is that correct, Mark?
Okay. And this is a mayoral appointment with council approval?
Yes. I have a copy and a letter here from the mayor's office or from the mayor himself. This is their council president, Brito. I hereby nominate Dr. Allen Nutello at 153 Circuit Drive of the Planning Board. This appointment is made by the mayor and subject to approval by the city council. The terms of the appointment board is five years pursuant to charter of the City of East Providence, Section 2-13, and revised code of ordinance of the City of East Providence, Section 2-168.
I'd just say, for the council, I don't know, those of you who know Allen, but I've known him most of my life, there probably isn't a person that's better versed in the history of East Providence on the planet. He knows about stuff that stopped existing 50, 60, 70 years ago. It's really kind of remarkable. So I think it's, it's a great thing for us to have somebody with that kind of skill set involved in land use planning. So, you know, again, bravo for these people coming forward and willing to volunteer for this stuff.
Would you like to make a motion?
I absolutely would.
Okay.
Mr. President, in seconding that, I would say, in addition to that background, he also has a good sense of neutrality, listening to all sides of issues, as I know him, and makes up his own mind after some careful thought. And it's a refreshing thing to see him come forward, and I therefore second.
Very good. So we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilman Roderick. So roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is for an appointment for assessment review. This is Darlene Andre, and this is a new appointment. And this is for the vote.
And again, from the mayor's office, their council president, Brito, I hereby nominate Ms. Darlene in rated 117 Glenwood Avenue to the Board of Assessors Review. This appointment is made by the mayor and subject to approval by the city council. The terms of the appointment is for six years pursuant to charter of the City of East Providence, Section 4-2. Move approval? Okay. We have approval on the floor. Would anyone like to second that approval?
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you all. Move right along.
The next appointment is Conservation Commission, James Boyd, for reappointment. Council President Brito, this is for the vote.
This is, I think this is about the second or third term of Mr. Boyd, if I'm not mistaken. Very active in the community. He's been involved with the commission for some time. And he brought a lot of his wisdom and his expertise to this Conservation Commission. And with that being said, he had asked me whether or not I'd be interested in reappointing him. And without any second thought, I most certainly said I most certainly would.
Mr. President, trusting your judgment, as well as the mayor making this recommendation, I move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
And we have a second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you all.
The next appointment and the last appointment is Historical Commission, Leo Cassi. This is a reappointment. Council President Brito, this is also for the vote.
Again, Mr. Cassi brought this to my attention, that his term has expired. He brought a lot of expertise and wisdom and knowledge to the Historical Commission. They're very grateful that he was appointed the first time. And like he, they all wish that he is reappointed at this, reappointed for this position. So move? We have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. That concludes appointments. Next, please.
Next item is ordinances. First passage for the vote is an ordinance, an amendment of Chapter 2 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Administration. This covers Section 116 to 150, sponsored by Councilman Cahoon.
Okay. So really, I, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to consider items A and B together. Their two recommended ordinances changed, but they're really part and parcel of the same effort. So essentially, the thrust of the language changes in here. And I'd really like to thank Mark Fattaro for doing most of the legwork in pulling together the language that needs to be in both of these ordinances. But the thrust of these two changes is the creation of a department. And the creation of the department and the reorganization of a couple of different elements of the current city administration, specifically what these ordinances would do together, and more the planning set of ordinances than the economic development set of ordinances, is would establish the Department of Economic, of Planning and Economic Development, with the Division of Planning and the Division of Economic Development reporting directly to that department, that department head. The idea behind this is, and you have the ordinances there, and we can talk about the specific elements as you, as you wish, but I think it's clear to anybody in driving around East Providence and seeing the progress that's been made in certain sections, and, you know, progress that maybe hasn't been made in some other sections, and perhaps even a regression in certain sections, that we really are in need of a strategic push. Economic development takes thought. It takes long-term planning. It takes an understanding of municipal finance and, you know, grant funding and, you know, and planning and the law and a number of different things. And I think, you know, I don't want to call out any particular business or set of businesses, but I think we've seen that certain businesses tend to pop up over and over again, right within the city. And I think probably what we want, what we prefer to see, is an environment whereby we are going out and sort of recruiting the elements that fit into our comprehensive master plan. That's another thing. Our comprehensive master plan, which is a requirement, is, it's a five-year plan, and it's now 10 years old. So clearly, the needs of the city are far outpacing and outstripping what, you know, the people who are here are doing. And people here are doing a very good job. But we need a little bit more, little bit more oomph. So the idea behind having this position, would be able to have that strategic planning, to be able to make recommendations through the mayor, to the council, on ordinance changes, resolutions, to be able to establish multi-year budgetary planning, to be able to look into, you know, how things like, you know, arts and culture are going to fit into the master plan of the city. Keep in mind, when our master plan was done in 2010 to 2015, think about where the city was at that time, right? I mean, it was not, it was not boom times at all, right? So that perspective needs to be completely shifted for, you know, 2020 and beyond. So I guess I'll turn it over to the council and see what questions you have with regard to this language. And by the way, this does have, just in case you're wondering, this is certainly not me doing this in a vacuum. This does have the mayor's blessing. We were talking about this in his office just on Friday. And again, like I said, Mark did really yeoman's work in pulling a lot of this together.
So I had the opportunity, not only to read this, but go over it with yourself and the mayor as well. And this is something that the city is, and I, in need of. Like you said, as opposed to continuously having these same old businesses pop up, and we're not going out and getting really corporations or otherwise for our waterfront, or whatever it may be. I think this is an excellent idea. I think moving forward, we need to have someone that's out there, reaching out to businesses, recruiting businesses. Right now, we're just sitting back. And I want to say, sitting back as if anybody, no one's doing any work, but it's, you know, we don't have that comprehensive plan taken to effect as to what we're going to be doing in five years from now, and how we're going to be attracting new businesses to the city. So I was in favor before it became an ordinance, when it was part of a discussion. And I'm in favor now, as it is an ordinance, as it lies here in front of me today.
I think if I may just follow up on something, you just reminded me of Councilman Brito, and in part of the work that some of us did on the transition team when Mayor De Silva was coming in, a friend of mine, Melissa Linyara Spur, who, in conjunction with her husband, they have their own, you know, sort of marketing and consultant strategic business, right, where they help other businesses, right, kind of look at how they should market themselves. And they, you know, put together a plan, or mostly put together a plan specifically for the mayor, you know, what you need to really look at. And she really focused on a lot of things that East Providence traditionally hasn't focused on. So, and she benchmarked us against other communities that have really moved the needle on economic development. So for example, New Bedford, where you can see so many of the things that New Bedford has done, you know, kind of in their waterfront district, if you will, they commit seven FTEs to economic development. We have one. And I'm not saying that we should break the budget and commit seven FTEs, but probably one isn't correct either, you know, especially if we're going to be competing with other communities for limited resources coming from, you know, federal and state pots.
Councilman, can I, would this create a new division head per se? Would it create another department head?
Yes, it would. And specifically, that department would be the Department of Planning and Economic Development. Or did I get that backwards? Is it Department of, yeah, okay.
So currently, this falls under the DPW, the reg, I'm not sure.
Currently, planning is a department?
Yes, this would be amending the Director of Planning to the Director of Planning and Economic Development. And what is currently the Director of Planning would be, it would become a division head. It would become the Division of Planning. And then there would be a Division of Economic Development, which currently, we already have within the Department of Planning. We have someone who's in charge of CBG money, which at a previous council meeting came forward. And then we also have Jim Moran, who's a planner, who's tasked specifically with economic development. He's kind of left free as a floater for that. And as the councilman pointed out, the purpose of this is that planning, we have as a city great resources here, not just the waterfront. We also have Taunton Ave, we have Warren Ave. We have these, we have these areas that really have been underutilized, and mostly for a lack of marketing. Our planning department, and don't get me wrong, it's a fantastic department, but planning in its nature is meant to receive plans. It's not necessarily passive, but it's meant to receive the plans. Economic development is meant to go out. It's meant to market our city. And having a director that can do that, that can balance the two, is going to help further the economic goals that our city wants. And while we're having a new high school built that's going to broaden our tax base, that's definitely going to help with economic incentives to get people to move in here. And then, once we take into account the details that's broken down, if you look at, I believe, it's a lot of, a lot of the Planning and Economic Development Board, portion of the ordinance, is just changing things to be in sync with the charter. But when it comes to the director with the Department of Planning and Economic Development, and it separates it into divisions, there's, it specifies, "The Division of Planning shall create, maintain, and implement all neighborhood redevelopment and special area plans and oversee environmental planning, historic preservation planning, and transportation planning and transit initiatives." We already do that. That's, that's nothing new. But on top of that, "The Division of Economic Development shall be responsible for identifying promoting development opportunities for business growth, development in the city. The Division is also responsible for dispersing and monitoring the expenditure of federal community development funding. The Division shall be responsible for identifying opportunities to expand development for arts and culture within the city." Again, we do this, but there isn't as much of an emphasis placed on it. We have Dave Backrak, who's in charge of our CBG money. He's great, but he's one person. He doesn't have the tools with him to really go beyond his role. This, changing this ordinance, shifting this department into a 21st century role, would allow us to both tap into the resources that we already have, but also market ourselves as a city, to be pro-business, and also to attract residents.
So to Mark's point, take, for example, somebody considering starting a new business in East Providence, a small business, right? in East Providence, a small business, right? I think I can speak fairly confidently from this position since my wife has recently done it. The first thing you want to know is where you can set up, right? So you start looking for space requirements, or, you know, whether you want gas heat, or, you know, if you want AC, or if you want someplace that's ADA compliant, certainly most people do, right? There isn't really a good way to search for that stuff right now within the city of East Providence's resources. Again, going back to Mr. Moran, I mean, I think basically he's sort of the, the single point of failure for anybody who wants to reach out to him. He has that information, but you, you have to catch him, right? And most people do this research on their own time, after hours, et cetera. Going from there, if you want to have a good understanding of what, you know, building code and inspection requirements might be, licensing requirements, et cetera, you have to go around to different departments and get their various different perspectives. And eventually, you might get frustrated and go somewhere where it's easier. So I think what we want very simply is a way to make it a lot easier. As we move forward, one of the things that, and, and this is something I, you know, one of the reasons actually I was really interested in what the mayor had to say when he started campaigning last year, was he was talking about finding a way to make this easier for small businesses, and he was talking about specifically this idea, so it's exciting to see it come to fruition. From my side, on the budgetary standpoint, and, and you guys hear me hammer the budget all the time, you can only get so much through savings. You can only cut so much. Our expenses are growing, we're going to need to increase revenue, and that can't be on the backs of the taxpayers, right? By law, there's only so much you can raise taxes, and, you know, by ethics and morality, there's only so much that you should do it as well. And there's only so much that they can afford. So if we're going to increase that revenue, we've got to get businesses in here, you know, we've got to have a pipeline to the good businesses that generate that revenue that we need.
Mr. President?
Please.
I just wanted to add my support to this, and thank you, Councilman Kahoon, for sponsoring and doing work, and thank you, Director Fattado, for, as Councilman Kahoon said, doing so much legwork here. I, I think that we're at a, we're at a crossroads. We are doing so many good things with planning, the Newport Avenue project and others. However, our planners receive these proposals, and they deal with the existing ordinances and policies and make it happen. What I'm hearing is this is more of a, an assistance by, to them by going out and recruiting and, and trying to bring in, bring in some of these proposals. It doesn't take rocket scientists to see that our neighboring city of Providence is in some trouble. Financial sources that I talk to and just read about, say, big cities like Warwick, Cranston, Pawtucket. If, if Hasbro goes, I'm hearing Pawtucket is going to have some serious issues. They've already lost a hospital, the Red Sox, et cetera. We're kind of on the upswing. We've got a waterfront that before was pretty much ignored in East Providence. We've had, what is it, 11, 12 miles or so, a lot of, of great potential waterfront that for whatever reason, all of us ignored it. And so now, we're, we're on the move. I heard from a realtor last week that was trying to rent an empty building in Riverside, and he had a great tenant, who he said has been very successful with developing Barrington's Main Street with businesses, but some red tape, and I'm, I'm waiting to pursue this to see what he specifically meant, but some red tape he ran up against here caused this tenant to say, "Thanks, but no thanks, I'm going elsewhere," and he, and he left. And so now the building in Riverside stands empty. So hopefully, this will help with a lot of these things, and if it doesn't, we revisit it, you know, in the, in the near future. But anyway, it's a long way to say thank you to those who worked on this, and it's something that I'm willing to support.
Thank you, Councilman.
If I might also, Councilman, just to add, and this includes Councilman Kahoon in it, from the, from the planning phase of this ordinance change, it was taking exactly that thought process and flipping it. You know, we're, we are burdened with state regulations as far, as far as, you know, code enforcement and everything like that, which obviously is important. But looking at it from almost a consumer angle as attracting businesses, trying to create a one-stop shop, that's the idea, someone who's coming into the city, whether a resident or a business, big or small, mom and pop shop, just taking them by the hand and guiding them through the steps, making sure they don't get caught up in that red tape. And that's the idea. And that, in addition to planning and economic development, it also, in the ordinance, specifies that it works with the Division of Building Inspection, which is under DPW per the charter, but it would work with them very closely as far as the permitting process, to make sure that more or less they get their handheld, at least guidance through it, to make sure there's follow-up. A lot of times, there's, there isn't that follow-up that people feel. And then, in addition, there would be a strong interaction between the new department and the Department of Finance, specifically to know how much money we have as a city and to do budget forecasting, to know what's coming down the pike, so that we can, you know. Right now, times are good. Maybe down the line, times won't be as good. Maybe it'll be great. We don't know. But having the proposed director meet with the Director of Finance, the controller, knowing what's going on in the city, keeping, you know, working in conjunction, that's good for everybody. So just having everyone communicate is the goal. Customer service is the goal, and that, that's the spirit behind the ordinance, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fattado.
Okay. Mr. President, this is for first passage. Councilman, I'd be glad to move first passage tonight.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for first passage.
May I just ask, is that for both?
For, for both audiences, as, as you combined, yes.
Can we do one at a time, please?
Oh, all right. Check that. Let's do one at a time. So my motion is for the first one.
I second that motion. All right, and that's Administration, right, Section 116-150?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. The Councilman Rodrick, seconded by Councilman Morato. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Berto.
Aye. Next ordinance?
The next ordinance to be voted on is the Ordinance and Amendment of Chapter Two of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Administration. This is Section 166 to 178.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Mr. President, I would also move approval for the Section 116-150 for first passage.
No, 178, that's the first.
Oh, that was the first one. 166-178 for first passage.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for first passage. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Morato. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Berto.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fattado. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing, Second Passage for Vote. This is an Ordinance and Amendment of Chapter 14 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Section 14-40, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Souza and Councilman Kahoon.
So the only change in this version of the ordinance from the last time that we met from first passage is that Section F has been removed, and that was the section about the lien that the solicitor had the concern with, and we all agree that that should come out, so that has come out, and I think we probably can, at your convenience, Mr. President, move to a public comment, because there isn't really anything else.
Section F, that was?
That was Section, yeah, believe it, Section F.
Wall of hearing, you're on.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's Section F at the very end, right, right before, a paragraph F, rather, right before Section Two.
It won't be in there because it'll be removed.
Oh, you're going to strike it? You just?
Yeah, we struck, we struck it, so it won't, will not be in this version.
So city discretion was the second to last paragraph last time, now it's the last paragraph.
All right, so this is a public comment? At this point in time, anyone from the public wishing to come speak for or against this ordinance, please step up to the podium.
Can I make a comment, Mr. President?
Sure, you most certainly can.
So I had, I, I did receive a lot of phone calls from residents in Ward Four, and I just want to put out there that this ordinance has been an ordinance that's always been in place. It's not a brand-new ordinance. My Councilman Kahoon is proposing, and what we're doing is just strengthening some of the fines, and I've been telling every resident that has called me that the hardship portion of this ordinance is still in place, and it's, we haven't touched it, but it's still there. And I just, I just want to ease people's minds as far as that goes. We did increase some of the, proposed some of the increases in the fines and the time restraints as the winter cleared as snow, but the ordinance has always been an ordinance, it's just one that hasn't really been enforced over the years that it's been an ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman. Sir, would you like to state your name for the record, please?
My name is Peter Midgley.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Clerk, Honorable Counsel, I'm here to object to this ordinance. I don't think it's fair. It's probably been in existence for a very long time, but there's vantage in here that is, is really strange, and, and I'm going to preface that with saying, at one time, I did three blocks of sidewalks. I used a snow blower. I would go from Arnold Street and Turner Avenue down to Riverside Square, up Burnside Avenue to Arnold Street twice. And one of the, the things in here, what are you removing? I, I couldn't find what you were referring to when you said you removed something from this. What, what is the language that you remove?
There was, can I answer that? Okay. There was a section in here that we, there was automatic lien when someone didn't, when someone didn't do it.
Do you have the old passage?
I don't, I don't have it with me, because, it was removed, so it was, it was new language that was removed. So there's nothing in the existing ordinance that is, we removed a new section, basically.
Okay. Well, everything that this says you should do, I do. I do approximately 1,200 feet of sidewalk every time it snows. I have a snow blower, I have the equipment, and I've been doing it for 35 years. But it, on, one of the paragraphs, it says, "The owners of all the properties bordering the..."
What paragraph number is this, sir?
Uh, you know, it's, what?
B.
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 It says, "Within 24 hours or the end of the snowfall, remove all the snow." Then there's a comment, it says, "Or the fall of the deposit of snow and ice on the sidewalk." So how's snow and ice going to fall on the sidewalk? It's not. There's a vantage in here that says you can't put the snow on the street, but that's where all the snow comes from, from the street. And I've done it, like I said, for 35 years. I know soon to get done, the plows go by at 40 miles an hour, and they undo everything that I do. On the corners, it says you, you have to remove this. I have two bordering, I have two homes, they border Turner Avenue and Burnside Avenue on the corners. The plows go out of their way to pile the snow four feet high. I mean, you need construction equipment to get the snow out of there. It's, it's unfair, not to me. I mean, I can do it, I'm still doing it, I'm still in pretty good shape, but you get an older person that pays a kid to come by and pay him $30 to do their sidewalk, and 10 minutes later, the plows go by and undo it all. I mean, they don't have an unlimited supply of money to pay kids to do sidewalks. There should be something in the ordinance. If you're going to make an ordinance that tells me what I have to do, why don't you put something in there that says what the city has to do, to try and be considerate of the people that are out there doing it? I, I know that the guys that do the plow and have to plow the snow, but they seem to take great delight when I get done to undo everything I've done. I go out and do it again, that's my obligation as a, a good citizen. I do it in front of St. Brendan's Church, I help them do their sidewalks. I, I do the sidewalks in front of the Masonic Temple and my neighbors, because if I'm going to go down to the temple, I'm not going to go down the street, I'm going to go down the sidewalk. So I'll do my neighbor's sidewalks as I'm going. But when you get to these intersections where there's crosswalks, and, and it's no longer snow, it's ice, it's like a glacier went through, and it's unfair to require the property, not me, like I said, I can do it, as long as my health holds out, I'll keep doing it, but to the other people in this city that have to do it, I don't think it's fair. And I think there should be some consideration in this audience, ordinance, that will say, that the city will try not to undo everything that a property owner does. And then the final thing on here, the, those two things, the fire hydrants. At one time, I made a suggestion that people who live near a fire hydrant, it should be a focal point, a social gathering for everybody around that fire hydrant, because the, the person whose property borders the fire hydrant isn't the only person who's going to receive a benefit if there's, if his house burns down. A neighbor should get out, and you should encourage the neighbors to, to clean up areas like that. And then the last one is, and I never saw this one before, you want, after it's done, the property owner to go out and sand and salt the sidewalk. Well, that puts an obligation and a liability on him, because they, if, if the snow melts and he doesn't get out in time, then he could be negligent, because he didn't put sand or salt on the sidewalk. I think that's an unreasonable request, because it puts the property owner in a bind. After you get done doing everything you've done, you'd have to go out and, and patrol your sidewalks 24 hours a day to make sure there's no snow on them. And I think that that requires a little thought on your part. So there, there's a lot of things on there. Oh, the other thing is you can't put the snow on, you can put the snow from the street on the sidewalk. You own a street and you own a sidewalk. Now, all of a sudden, it's my responsibility to get rid of the snow and the ice that's on this, your sidewalk, our sidewalk. If, it, it says that you can't put it on the street, well, if you've got a real good day, I'm just saying, this is why some of this stuff doesn't, you could probably get away with it and never get caught, but if, if the police come by and they say you're putting snow on the street, they say you can't do that. If it's a good day, a nice bright sunny day, you can throw a lot of snow on the street. Streets are black, they're tar, they absorb heat, and in a couple of minutes, an hour, it's gone. So the property owner could be dressing up his property after the storm, after the plows are gone by, throwing it in the street, and then get bagged for putting snow in the street. Well, excuse me, how did the snow get on the sidewalk? The city took it off the street and put it there. So again, consider what you're asking the property owner to do. Consider the reality of what comes down. If you get a four-inch snowfall, and you go out on your sidewalk and you've got 12 to 14 inches of snow, the sidewalks aren't snow magnets, they don't pull the snow off the street. And if, Public Works would say, are they plow guys? Hey, look, you see Midgley's out there doing a sidewalk? You want to lug it off? Mr. Rodrick, he just got done doing a sidewalk, you see him out there, why don't you lug it? By lugging it, I mean slow down, go by, don't undo what he's been working all morning trying to get done. And again, consider the people that have to pay people to do their sidewalks. How many times are you obligated to do the same thing? You, you get it done, the plows go by, you think you're safe, you get it done? Nope, they're coming back and they're cleaning up and cleaning up. So I think this requires a little more thought on the part of passing it for the fact of what the people have to go through to do it. And again, I've been doing it for 40 years, 35 years, ever since I could, and I do it because I can. I did it because I, there's a church right across the street from my property, there were two schools, I didn't want the kids in the street, so I did all the sidewalks. The schools are gone, the church is still there, I'm still doing snow, I'm going to keep doing snow till I can't, but I'd like you to reconsider. doing snow till I can't, but I'd like you to reconsider some of the provisions of this ordinance. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, because like I said, I've been doing this for a long time, and, you know, again, it doesn't take the Snow Plow 101, I don't know if they have classes for it or not, but a little consideration on the part of the city would go a long way too when we're doing this.
Can I ask you, Mr. Midgley, I, I know when you were involved before, you sat up here as a councilperson, this ordinance was in place, so what were you hearing from people? Was it an issue? Was it a problem? What did the city do to help or?
The problem has always been undoing what the residents do. In other words, if they do the sidewalks, in a blink of an eye, they're undone. And I think that most of the plow guys, that they know who's doing sidewalks, they know who's not. They ride by, they see you out there shoveling, they see you out there with your snow blower, they'll nod, hi, how you doing? Soon as you turn your back, you get three feet of snow, two feet of snow on your sidewalk again. I mean, a little consideration goes a long way.
Would you agree, it seems to be more of a problem near schools, maybe churches, high rises, as opposed to a sidewalk to nowhere on some quiet street?
Well, you know, one of the other things in here is you have to have a three-foot sidewalk, and I asked about that, and they said that's because of people in wheelchairs. Again, for, for the 40 years I've been doing sidewalks, I've never seen anyone go up Turner Avenue or Burnside Avenue in a wheelchair on the sidewalk. Again, the snow blowers, they come in various widths, I mean, I'm not, they come 20-inch, 18-inch, 24-inch, 30-inch. If a guy makes a path that people can go up and down, I think he's being a good citizen and doing his job. But now you're making it 30 inches, or there's gonna be a sidewalk inspector going out saying, oh, it's gonna be 36 inches, you didn't do a good enough job. Again, it puts a hardship, and the person's not doing what the ordinance says, he's not making it 36 inches. Why? Again, you know, are you gonna go out in the middle of the night and check and make sure you don't have any ice? Because if you don't, if you're not checking it 24 hours a day, and someone falls, they'll say, you know what, he didn't do his job, he didn't put the salt down, he didn't do the sand, he was negligent, we're gonna sue him. So I mean, I think that part right there puts people in jeopardy. So again, I'd like you to give it another look, you don't need to pass it tonight, and, you know, if you want to ask me any questions from now until, you know, and the irony of it is, this weekend's gonna be the hottest weekend on record, and we're talking about snow removal and ice and people falling down, and, and it's gotta be a message there somewhere.
So I'll start, Mr. Midgley, because I kinda led this effort, right? I joined the school committee about five years ago, and the first winter we had was a pretty rough one, it was 14, there was a lot of snow. Driving around the different elementary schools in particular, and in the high school, it became apparent to me that there were certain residences and certain businesses that didn't touch their sidewalks, like ever, right? So whether there was six inches of snow, a foot of snow, they just didn't do the job. And when you look at some of those areas like, you know, where Orla Avenue School is, and the kids are walking up there from Central Avenue or on North Broadway, and they've gotta walk in the street where traffic is going at a pretty good clip, that was a big concern for me, that was a particular trouble spot. Over by Hennessy was another trouble spot. So this kinda put a bee in my bonnet early, and what I started doing was I started sending photos to the council. Now, this is what it looks like, you know, around Fort Street and Lyon, this is what it looks like around Orla and Broadway. What can we do about this? What can we do, not just the sidewalks, but the streets, but I was primarily concerned about the sidewalks. And then this became a recurring issue year on, year in and year out. This ordinance was always in place, it was enforced sort of selectively, and I think some people got notices when they didn't do what they were supposed to, and others didn't. And then there were folks like yourself that, you know, did their duty to the community and for the reward that you got, which was that the plows stuck in the snow back up on your sidewalk. But ultimately, what I got to was, there was a story, maybe two, maybe three years ago, where there was a kid coming out of a school in Cranston, an elementary school, and the kid was trying to walk home and balancing on top of the snowbank, up on top of somebody's sidewalk, fell under the bus and was crushed by the bus and died. And, and all I could think about, aside from the kid, was the poor bus driver who had absolutely nothing to do with that and has to live with that for the rest of their lives. And I said, well, if I get in a position to do something about this, I'm gonna try, because I never, ever wanna think that I could've done something to stop that, and I certainly know that, and I'm not implying that, you know, anything to the contrary with regard to what you said. That said, so this has kinda been going on for a while, we've been talking about this ordinance in and out of different sessions, probably since January, for many of the reasons that you brought up, because it sounds simple in principle, but then you get into the details, and it's, all right, well, where do you, you know, where do you draw the line? So I, I, I think actually, and I don't know, I don't know if this is something that we can do, but one of the things that I did when I started this is I put it out to the public via my Facebook page, and I said, hey, if anybody has any specific expertise in this, because I don't, I'd really love your feedback. And I don't know if the council has any appetite for putting this off yet again, but as you mentioned, it's hot as hell outside, snow and ice isn't gonna be a problem for the next couple of months. I'm willing to collect a little bit more feedback, and if you wanna have some discourse on some things that we can do to make this better, I'm certainly willing to do that.
Well, I got plenty of time on my hands, and I ride around a lot. When I was a councilperson, I knew my ward, I knew things that were wrong, I'd always come back and bring it to the manager, I paid attention to detail. And like I said, at one time I was doing 6,000 feet, it's not like I'm trying to get out of anything, I'm just saying that I, I think the 36-inch is unreasonable, and I think that the obligation, or the, that you have to put sand and snow down, sand and snow, sand and salt puts you, me, whoever does this, in a liability position, because snow melts, it freezes, you can't be there all the time. And, and I don't want them to come back and say, oh, Midgley didn't put his sand down, we're gonna sue him, I fell and broke my arm. Well, you know, people that walk on sidewalks in the wintertime and people that walk on the roads in the wintertime when there's snow, there's some element of risk when you do that.
Sure.
I mean, life, you know, you can't wrap people up in a bubble and send them up and down Willard Avenue or Turner Avenue. I mean, there's some responsibility on your part, you have to be careful. And, and again, I saw that, and that really gave me the, the angst, because I've got 1,000 feet of sidewalk, some people have more, some people have less, but if you're in, and I'm getting there, but if you're an elderly person, you're gonna go out and walk up and down your sidewalk, and then you'll fall before you can get the sand on. I, I don't think that's a reasonable request by the city. I mean, keeping it clean, keeping it clear, sure, but when someone's walking down a sidewalk and it melted that afternoon and it froze, I don't think it's, you know, it, it, you can't effectively police it. I mean, you go out the next day and look, but if they fall at night, then you're up the river, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I can see that point. I think one of the things that I thought about, and actually, Mark Norton back there kinda brought this up to me when we very first started talking about this, well, what do you do about those cases where people get everything piled back up on their driveway or on their sidewalk? And several residents have brought that up to me in the course of trying to, I don't think there's a way of getting around that.
There is plow snow, slowly.
That, that's, that's it, right? That's it, right? Slow down. But I kinda feel like maybe that's a different ordinance and.
Well, it shouldn't be a different ordinance, it, it should be a, a policy.
A regulation.
From DPDW, you know, from, from highway.
Yeah.
I, I, again, I mean, it's not all about me, and I hate to be up here going, I, 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 me, 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 me. I have my neighbor, Mr. Mello, we get out, we do the sidewalks. There was a time when I do the sidewalk from Platte School right down to Riverside Square, but they were clean. I had a, a good friend right across the street from me, at the corner of Burnside and Smith, on the right-hand side, on the, the east side. The plow came by, it put the snow on this guy's porch, on his porch. I mean, a little bit of consideration goes a long way. And there's an excellent joke online, you could probably find it, about a guy that moves to New England and the snow plows in the trucks, by the time this guy's done, he's ready to start throwing hand grenades, and that's, that's where I am sometimes too.
One last question, Mr. Midgley, when you finish, you know, Turner, Burnside, the 600 feet or so that you do, could you come over to Plum Road?
Well, you don't have, you don't have sidewalks.
See, I turned 65 today, and I'm trying to, trying to slow down a little.
You know, I was, you know, I was just thinking that when I was, I was telling this story. When I started, I was 35, I'm 75 now, and.
Oh, he's not gonna help me.
No, but, all right, do you have sidewalks?
Actually, I don't.
Okay.
I don't either.
And, and that's the other thing, this, only, only, some people are gonna get affected by this ordinance, and other people are gonna look out and go, I don't have any sidewalks, I don't even have any cribs, all I get is grass. So, again, for the people that do have sidewalks, and the people that do have cribs, and the people that do go out and do it, cut us some slack there, all right?
I gotta ask, Mr. Solicitor, will the homeowner actually be liable if someone was to fall?
He's a lawyer, depends if you're coming to him for a suit or not.
I'm a defense attorney, so I don't, I never sue, I always defend. The evidence, sidewalks are owned by the city or the state, so generally you wind up suing the, the city or the state. They, they like to sometimes look at the, the underlying ordinance to see if they can sue someone else, but generally the, as a general principle, you usually just get the, the state is the, state or the city is the proper party.
Okay, you heard it here, folks.
Generally, I said.
If it pleased the council, I don't have a problem with taking another look at the language and kinda relaxing those provisions around salt and sand treatment, and even taking another look at the language about, you know, the three-foot requirement, you know, replacing it with something along the lines of, you know, a clear path or, or whatever that might be. But I do think we wanna get this thing passed at some point.
I, I agree, and I'd like to see all sidewalks done, because I mean, I, I look at mine, and they're, they're a long way from perfect, they're very, very nice. You can come down and walk on my sidewalks after any storm, and after any plow goes by, come back and walk on them again. But it irks me to see other people that don't do it.
Me too.
But for whatever reason, but my, my empathy goes with the people, the old timers, the real old timers, that pay someone to do it, and then the city undoes it. That's where I think the inequity is, that's where I think the, you know, there should be more consideration when you see it done. Say, oh, look, you know, the sidewalks are done, I'm gonna slow down and I'm just gonna go five miles an hour by here, and then, oh, they're not done, so they haven't got their done, I'll go get it done.
And councilman, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, and this is what it's geared for, those people who absolutely disobey the law, they just don't plow, shovel, remove any snow from their sidewalks. There are people, like you said, I don't think this is geared specifically for those people who, you know, who cleared their sidewalk from one, from one portion to the other side, because you know when people see that happening, and you, you could tell when a plow comes through. But then, on the flip side of that coin, there are people who just don't do it at all. And I'm not saying that this isn't geared toward those people who make first passage, go through, and then a plow comes through and they don't do it again, because eventually those people care, like he does, they care and they'll go out there and do it. It's those people who just don't do it at all.
Well, again, maybe there's a way to encourage them, and like I said, the thing, the fire hydrants, one of the proposals I made as a, when I was a councilman was, you know, maybe the, the neighbors should get together and say, hey, there's a fire hydrant over there, and my most precious investment is within 200 feet of it, anyone within 200 feet should chip in, but make it a community thing, but there's a lot of things to do. Like I said, the sanding and salting, the 36-inch, and then the attitude, and I don't wanna say they have bad attitudes, but the attitude of the guys that are plowing, maybe they should have a, a little course in, uh, plowing 101, and not to try and antagonize anybody that's doing what the city requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think in light of the fact that, you know, Mr. Midgley took the time to really read through this and, and, and provide some thoughtful feedback, I'd like to take another crack at it. I don't know how the council feels, but, you know, this is, the council's ordinance and not mine, but I guess I would ask you for that courtesy if I, if I may. You know, maybe we can table this until next, and I don't know if that means we have to start at first and second passage again, and that's okay, because again, we're in July, so we got some time. But I think it's, I think it's worthwhile.
Mike, I think we could table and still consider it a second passage, right? We don't have to start from scratch?
Not if it changes.
Not if you make a change.
Yeah, and I'm gonna make a change, definitely.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with that, and you, you've done so much work, just give me a call, I'll be willing to sit down with you and help out, I'll, I'll look at it further also.
As long as we beat November.
Yeah.
I'm good with that as well.
I agree, Councilman Kahoon has done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate you taking the time.
All right. Do we need a motion?
Can I, can I move to, uh, table, uh, second passage pending revision of the ordinance?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table the second passage of the ordinance. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second, roll call vote.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roddick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you, sir, for your input. Next item, please.
Next item is an ordinance, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled, utilities. This is section 17 dash, or section 17 dash 183. Councilman Morato.
So this ordinance is up for a second passage. As mentioned before, some of the ordinance changes, and this was all done in, in looking at what we pay out in abatements yearly, that's kind of alarming, between 70 and 90,000 dollars. And it also helps the council where some of the changes, for example, the $250 in the abatements, sewer abatements up to 250 will be decided by the DPDW director versus coming to the council. Anything above that will still come to a council vote. The percentage as to where the three-year average went from 33% to 50%, and the pool filling of a swimming pool from $30, one-time $30 credit to $100. And one of the other changes, the property owner shall not be more than 30 days delinquent on their water or sewer bill at the time of a request for a sewer charge abatement. So those are the changes for second passage.
Okay. Is this up for public comment? Public, okay. Anyone?
Anybody left?
Fred, would you like to comment on this? Anyone wishing for public comment to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone for public comment wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward. With that being said, no one's here to speak for or against, public comment is closed at this point in time. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval.
I also wanna add that this will be, if passed tonight, it will be in effect October 1st. It'll take effect October 1st.
It takes effect October 1st, okay. All right, so we have a motion, second, and second it, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye, and thanks for all your work, Councilman Morato.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roddick.
Also, thank you, councilman, for all your work, I vote aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is under new business, it's reports of other city officials, city solicitor Michael J. Marcello, claims committee report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, members of the City Council. As you know, the City Council met at 6:30, an executive session to discuss the following matters, under litigation, case of Brian Farrier in City of East Providence, it was reported that that case has been settled upon the payment of a nominal sum by Mr. Farrier in return for a, a release of all claims that he may in the future have or against the city. That case has been formally settled and is now behind us. We got an up status update from Assistant City Solicitor Dylan Con. We got an up status update from Assistant City Solicitor Dylan Conley on the ongoing light, I'm sorry, light, streetlight, streetlight litigation regarding national grid in the Public Utilities Commission, no other action was taken other than a status update. Finally, the council voted seven, excuse me, five to zero, excuse me, four to zero to approve a settlement agreement with Providence Country Day School, which settled about four years or five years of tax assessment disputes in return for the city paying $38,000 for what they believe were overdue taxes. In return for that payment, PCD gave a parcel of land to the City of East Providence for use to expand the parking lot behind the police station. That settlement has been approved contingent upon the city receiving all confirmation of all other contingencies being met, including release of a mortgage by PCD on that portion of the property. And that was approved five to zero, excuse me, four to zero. New claims, unless otherwise indicated, these claims were approved unanimously by the City Council. Claim for property damage in the amount of $3,416.34 of George Thomas Associates Limited was referred to the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. The claims of Justin Senical in the amount of $2,055.14 for property damage was also approved unanimously by the City Council. Sewer abatements, the sewer abatement charge, excuse me, sewer abatement request of Robert Bafaro in the amount of $257.76 was approved to a credit up to $100. The sewer abatement request of Maria Costa in the amount of $165.18 was approved. The sewer abatement charge in the amount of $1,040.98 of Anthony Farah was approved by the City Council unanimously. Claim for sewer abatement of Nancy Martin in the amount of $534.7, excuse me, $534.74 was also approved unanimously. Sewer abatement request of $405.54 for Joe Roderick was approved unanimously. And finally, the sewer abatement request of Jeanne Spear in the amount of $77.65 was approved unanimously, all with a positive recommendation of the Director of Public Works. That concludes my report, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
The next item is under...
Do we have to approve? We have to make a motion to approve?
Accept the report.
Accept the report.
Move to accept the report, Mr. President.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is under resolutions. The first resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School. This is for April 2019, sponsored by Councilman Kahoon.
So these invoices have already been paid for April, just FYI. I think this resolution failed to find its way to the council, and this is making that right. The number that you see on there is the correct number for April invoices, but to be clear, the checks were cut, the architects were paid, April is done, nobody is in arrears, and we're not getting billed for interest. So I just want that to be clear.
Very good for the clarification. For paperwork purposes, so move.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Okay, and the second pile of invoices, if you will, from June of 2009, this is the amount totaling $795,929.22. These invoices have yet to be paid. These are the ones that were lately approved by the building committee through the school committee and have found their way to the council. Again, the resolution itself is the same, just the amounts have changed. So this one is simply for, and I think all of the invoices were tied into your packet so you can see what they're for. Just so you know, basically, we've completed, or the architects have completed essentially 100% of detailed design. They build through about 88% of the budgeted amount for detailed design. So their billing is consistent with the budgeted value.
Mr. President, this is certainly consistent with whenever a community passes a bond issue, and the voters have done that here, so this is routine as I see it, I move approval.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for approving this authorization of payment for the month of June. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next and last item, please.
Next and last item is resolution establishing the language of proposed amendment to the East Providence City Charter, as will be voted on at subsequent charter referendum, sponsored by Councilman Morado.
So I originally put this on here for a vote, and there's going to be a new charter language added to section 2-9. And I'm going to end up tabling this.
You can table.
And I'm glad I am, because I just remembered something in the charter. The school committee, and this is probably a question for the solicitor, the years listed for school committee currently are two years in the charter, so maybe that's something that we can add to this resolution, if the council so wished. And we can do it where it's, I don't know if this is possible, but to start in whatever that...
No, so the, that's been, it's been already amended for four years. We talked about that earlier. The only thing that the council needs to do to get to the four-year term is not to amend the charter, it's already been amended for four years, it's just not effective, because we haven't got it ratified by the General Assembly.
No, it's just two years in the charter.
It's two years because it hasn't been, it's, the amendment was passed to add it to four years, but it hasn't become effective because the General Assembly hasn't ratified that change, so that's why it remains at two.
So we can't...
The voters have already approved the four years, it just hasn't been ratified.
So we can't codify the existing charter.
You can't codify the existing charter.
But to your point, Councilman Morado, there, and I want it to be 100% clear, I support the idea of having department heads here when we have questions, period. I don't care if it's ordinance, I don't care if it's resolution, I don't care if it's discussion, I just don't think we can do this job without it, right?
Agreed.
At the same time, I 100% understand the mayor's responsibility and the mayor's authority over the folks in the administrative service, and we have to respect that, and I think we will, and I think we can come to terms on that. There are a couple of things that I would like to see additionally change in a charter, especially if we're going to be talking about a special election. To me, that's a lot to take on for a charter change for a couple of items, knowing that we have additional things that we want to see change. Given our passage, our first passage of these planning and economic development ordinances, for example, you know, seeing that the charter aligns the building inspector and the plumbing inspector and electrical inspector under DPW, to me, that just doesn't make any sense. That should all be done by ordinance, and it should be done by recommendation of the mayor's office. And I think there's a host of things in there that we can probably pick through and say, "That's not perfect." Again, I'm not bashing the people that did the charter, the charter commission, they did a great, great job, but let's refine it, right? So that's kind of where I'm at.
I agree, and, yeah, might as well, if we're going to have this opportunity, might as well have the opportunity to fix other items in the charter. And again, not bashing the charter commission. I looked at every minute, I went back and looked at all the minutes from those meetings and to get what the intent was, some of this language change, and I really didn't have enough time to really look and pick through this. But I have one question for the solicitor in regards to this. The deadline, I believe, is 50 days prior to November 5th, right, to submit something to the Board of Elections.
So the local Board of Elections has to certify any charter, any ballot questions, local, excuse me, the local Board of Elections has to certify any local ballot questions at least 50 days prior to the November 5th election of this year? So, yes. What, that day, I think it's September 12th, I think we figured it out, September 12th. So that means you've got to pass it, and then they've got to certify it. It's really a local, once you pass it, it's really just a local Board of Camis's issue. So to the extent that you want to have any discussions on any other charter changes, and I don't want to get into talking about those tonight because they're not on the agenda, but to the extent that you need to, you want to do that, you can contact me, we may put together a nominal bus kind of charter change thing, if you want to do that, and it's up to you.
That's helpful, thank you. Yes, I do.
Mr. President, I won't repeat what Councilman Kahoon said. I agree with you and Mr. Councilman Morado, I think we, this council feels, we appreciate having department heads being able to come here. As you've stated before, as we've all stated, after receiving topics ahead of time, no surprises that they would come. I will tell you, though, I have a little tussle with myself as to how best to do this. I talked to you before that I'm not crazy about having a special election right away to the tune of $15,000 probably to the community, almost like we're punishing the taxpayers because council and mayor's office can't figure this out, and we should be able to figure it out easily. Will you allow department heads to come to a meeting when we send you questions? Yes, I will. No, I won't, whatever, get the answer. Do we really need to get everybody else to an election poll this coming November? We know history will tell us that voter turnout would be very low, and I just don't know how that would go. And I know we're talking about other issues to put on, so I would like to keep using the term that I've used a few times here, you know, be like a junior high school civics class, let's just figure this out in a room, and it should be done easily, rather than the taxpayers footing a bill to have an election coming up. It may get to that, and okay, if it does, fine, but I think we have some time to try to fix this.
I respect your opinion, Councilman Roderick, but here we are almost in August, and we've been around and around with the same situation. We've had memos from the mayor's office on his position, and in that memo, as you know, that he directed to his public, his department heads to refer any questions from council to, through the mayor's office. As I've said before, this is not a, you know, Councilman Morado issue, mayor issue, this is a council issue. I have, on my long-term and short-term goals for Riverside, I have several items, I have many items on there, and I thought they were going to be up tonight to show as, you know, but every single one of those items require a dialogue of some sort with a department head, whether it be improving Willard Pond, whether it be improving Grassley Plain Park, whatever the case may be, every single one of those. And I feel as if with this wire drop, for example, being stonewalled the way I have been, I don't know how I'm going to continue doing what I got elected for, for the people of Riverside. I got elected with the intentions of improving my ward, and if it's this difficult to get a simple wire drop, or get information on sewer abatements, where I had to do work outside to other municipalities to get answers on detox meters and so on and so forth, it took me a lot of effort to get those answers, where I couldn't get it simply from our department head, where that could have been answered easily. And as far as the emails, email communications, I've sent numerous emails up through the chain, and I get no, I barely get any responses, I don't know if it's just me or anyone else on this council. So we've been down that road, we've talked about this, and even if we do get the ability to have department heads here upon our request, who's to say that in a month from now the mayor changes his mind? Who's to say that the next council will not, you know, have the same issue? So let's get it fixed once and for all, and let's clean up the other items on, in the charter that we can clean while we're at it. What I'm asking for, what we're asking for is not, it's not unreasonable. It's to discuss whatever's on that item on the docket for discussion. It's not to say, "Oh, look, there's a department head, nothing to do with the docket item, let me call that department head up as previous council had done." That's not what I'm asking for. And I do agree, I like sending the questions ahead of time, by not trying to embarrass anyone, we're trying to get substance. And by doing, sending the questions ahead of time, to me, that's a win-win, because we're going to get more substance back, we're going to get more answers. You're going to be able to ask questions that I, if it's my issue that I'm working on, that I may have not thought of while they're up here. That's a good question. Or I might see things differently, in a different light, when the council works together and asks questions, I don't have all the answers, so.
I hear you. I'm just, I'm willing to try one 11th-hour effort to have some kind of memorandum of agreement in writing that a solicitor puts together, that does what you want to do, and without causing the cost of an election. But it may get to that, I'm remaining open to the idea, but I'm willing to give it a little, another effort. You're right, and I'll finish by saying this, you're right that we've been talking about this for a while, but I think individually, we've been talking about this for a while, some of us have talked with Director Fattato, we've talked with the mayor. We have not yet, as a public body, put forward an official request to do what you want to do on Election Day, so that's all I'm saying. Let's get refused first at that request, and then if we have to go to the voters, we can do that, but I certainly hear everything you've said.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is adjournment.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, thank you.
That's the first thing we didn't do by roll call, I think.